Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Planning and Zoning Commission for the City of Titusville at this time. Let us all stand if we could and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's have the roll call.
Chairman Severs.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Richardson.
Present.
Secretary Spidey. Member Grant.
Here.
Member Murray. Member Parrish. Member Porter.
Here.
Alternate member Noel Copeland.
Here.
At this time, we do have a new member, alternate member, that has been appointed by the City Council if the Assistant City Attorney would like to administer the oath of office at this time.
I'd be happy to, and if we would like to do it from our seats, I'd ask the alternate member to press the button on the right of your microphone so that it red light comes on. There you go. All right. Now, if you will, please repeat after me. I state your name.
I Catherine Riley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And government.
And government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Florida.
And the state of Florida.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Domestic or foreign.
Domestic or foreign.
And that I will bear.
And that I will bear.
True faith.
True faith.
Loyalty and allegiance.
Loyalty and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And that I am entitled.
And that I am entitled.
To hold office.
To hold office.
Under the Constitution.
Under the Constitution.
That I will faithfully perform.
That I will faithfully perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Of the City of Titusville.
Of the City of Titusville.
On which I am about to enter.
On which I'm about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you very much, Ms. Catherine Riley. You are now officially sworn in as an alternate member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and tonight we do have two, at least two regular members absent who will require the attendance of two alternate members, which we do have present. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Chairman Severs.
Thank you. Member Riley, is there anything you would like to say at all? We're certainly happy to have you here as appointed by the City Council and look forward to serving with you.
I'm happy to be in the company of such esteemed members.
Okay, thank you. At this time, if you, if we could, attorney, if we could do the notice to the rules for conduct of the meeting.
All persons who anticipate speaking on any public hearing item must fill out an oath card to be heard on that agenda item and sign the oath card contained thereon. These cards are located on the table near the entrance to the council chamber or may be obtained from the recording secretary. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with, to the procedure adopted in Resolution number 24-1997. Those speaking in favor of a request will be heard first, those opposed will be heard second, and those who wish to make a public comment on the item will speak third. The applicant may make a brief rebuttal if necessary. A representative from either side, for or against, may cross-examine a witness. Anyone who speaks is considered a witness. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents that you desire for the commission to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the recording secretary. The Planning and Zoning Commission meeting may be conducted by utilizing Communications Media Technology, CMT, as provided in Section 120.54, Section 5B2 Florida statutes. In order to help prevent the spread of COVID-19 coronavirus and to comply with all local, state, and federal laws and guidelines regarding social distancing and social gatherings, designated seating shall be provided for the public within City Hall. Individual speakers shall, when directed to do so, be given the opportunity to speak on agenda items at City Hall during the meeting in accordance with Resolution number 16-2020. Signs held by speakers are permissible, but no tripods, easels, props, or other demonstrative aids shall be brought into City Hall. Regular broadcasts of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting via closed-circuit television and live-stream YouTube video may be accessed through the city's website. As an additional method for public participation, the public may submit written comments via email to planning@titusville.com or by regular mail to Planning and Zoning Commission's attention at City Hall 555 South Washington Ave., Titusville, Florida 32796. Written comments must be received by noon 12:00 PM prior to the start of the meeting and include the center's name, address, and the subject line must specify the agenda item being addressed. All comments will be disseminated to the Planning and Zoning Commission members and made a part of the public record prior to any action being taken.
Thank you. Pursuant to the notice, I just want to inform everyone that the City Council has adopted a policy, has not changed it thus far, as far as attempting to social distance and encouraging the wearing of masks. They're not mandatory, but they encourage the wearing of masks. The next item on the agenda is the minutes of September 16th. Do we have any additions or corrections to the minutes? Not hearing any?
Yes.
Uh, Member Spidey.
Um, I was tardy, not absent.
Pardon?
I was tardy, not absent.
Okay. Member Richardson.
I move to approve the minutes of meetings on September 16th for both the special meeting and the regular meeting, as amended by Member Spidey.
Thank you.
Uh, do we have a second, Member Grant?
Second.
Second. If we could, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
And those opposed, no?
Yes.
Okay, that passed. Before considering the next item, which is the quasi-judicial rules, which I'll be mentioning, I'd like to determine, certainly as you heard from the notice, if you desire to speak on any item, you need to fill out a card as such, so if you need to do that. With regard to the agenda we have, I assume most everyone is here on the indoor gun range. Is that correct? Is there anyone here on any other item? Which item are you here on, sir?
Item F, EcoCamer.
Okay. Unless someone on the commission objects, I would suggest that we move item C and F up to the first two items of the agenda, in the agenda, under new business, and that way we can dispose of those items or consider them earlier in the meeting. Is there any objection to that procedure? Not hearing any, we will proceed. Clearly, the indoor gun range is an issue which is a quasi-judicial matter, and in accordance with the city's adopted policies, I need to read the following. Certain items under old and new business may be public hearings. Individuals desiring to speak on those items must fill out an oath card and sign the oath contained thereon. Those cards are located near the entrance to the council chamber or can be obtained from the recording secretary. Some items which will be identified by the chairman, which I just identified, are quasi-judicial items, and those individuals desiring to speak in favor will first, will speak first, and those opposed, second, and those with a public comment, third. The applicant may make a brief rebuttal if necessary. Witnesses may be cross-examined by the applicant, commission members, staff, or such other representatives as authorized by the commission. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents you desire for the commission to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please provide the recording secretary. The quasi-judicial proceedings will be conducted in accordance with procedures adopted in Resolution 24-1997. Recording secretary, have all person wishing to speak signed an oath card.
I have two cards.
You have two cards. If you want to sign up, please, if not, if anyone wishing to speak, again, you must sign and submit an oath card. Staff, have all public hearings items been properly advertised?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
As the commission members visited the site or spoken to any member of the public regarding a quasi-judicial item, certainly this item drive past probably every day as far as where the proposed gun range is located. In the event a member has received an ex-party communication, verbal, written, or electronic, the identity of the person with whom the communication took place and the subject matter of the communication must be disclosed, including opinions, facts, discuss. Any written communication must be made a part of the record. Any disclosures by anyone? Not hearing any, we will proceed then. Staff, with CUP 2-2020.
Thank you. Uh, the applicant is requesting the addition of an indoor shooting range inside the existing premier pawn shop located at 2300 South Washington Ave. The shooting range will occupy 2,184 square feet of the existing gross floor area. The existing use is located in the community commercial zoning district, and the indoor recreational and commercial amusement use is permitted within the community commercial zoning district. Staff recommends approval of their request with the following conditions. Number one, a condition regulating the sound decibels as a result of the discharge from ammunition. Number two, for the building design to contain one or a combination of the industry design standards for the planning and construction of shooting ranges. And the third condition for the shooting range to operate between Monday and Saturday from 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM and Sunday, 12:00 PM to 5:00 PM. Thank you.
Any members of the commission have a question at this point?
Just one question for clarification.
Yes, sir.
On page 30, 32, and 45, it calls out seven, seven shooting ranges, but on page 38, the application, it calls out six. And I'm wondering if it's six or seven.
You said the shooting lanes correct?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, when the applicant first submitted the application, he did indicate that he'd like to have that original number that he said, but upon us going out there and speaking to the applicant later down the line, he did indicate that it will be a seven lane shooting range.
Any other questions at this time for staff? A couple of questions I have as far as in the code itself, this is a conditional use. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And there are criteria and the ordinance in which we are to determine whether one should be granted or denied. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. With regard to gun ranges, is there any section of the code that allows gun ranges as a matter of right without having a conditional use?
Gun ranges are not called out specifically in the code.
So there's no provision in the code that clearly says this is where gun ranges are located?
Correct.
But it's been staff's interpretation.
Say again?
Correct. It's been staff's interpretation, if I'm correct, that they're a recreational activity and as such can be allowed as a conditional use. Is that correct?
Correct, an indoor recreational activity.
Okay. As far as additional regulations, for example, some uses, we have additional criteria or objective criteria added other than the regular conditional criteria. Are there any in the code dealing with gun ranges?
No, sir.
No? Okay. Any other questions anyone may have? Okay, if we could, Madam Secretary, call the applicant.
Sean Williams.
Good evening. It's a little bit different being on this side of the fence, but I just wanted to let you know first off that this isn't a change in jobs. I actually came to this location for some education, an educational course, and they said that they were going to open up a gun range, and I thought that was interesting because we've only seen a handful of gun ranges come through Titusville. And I thought, well, that's a, that's a very high hurdle, and I still happened to say, hey, if you need some help, let me know. And lo and behold, they, they called and said, hey, we would like you to help us, and that's really all I'm here to do is try to help them, help ease the process. First of all, I wanted to kind of go back on some background on the gun ranges in Titusville. So far in Titusville, we've seen three in the last basically nineteen, probably nineteen years, and out of that, the two that were indoor were approved. So we hope that when you're considering this, that you will give consideration that the two indoor were previously agreed upon, and at the same time, the conditions that were requested by staff, we've complied with everything. As a matter of fact, I think they've gone above and beyond. Some of the things that they've done to help with the neighborhood is that they've reduced the hours of operation, and I asked them, I said, look, don't you want to have longer hours? He says, no, I can't imagine my shop being past, open past seven o'clock. I'm good, you know? Same with on the weekends, I think he said five o'clock, and he's being a good steward to the community, being a good steward to his neighbors. On top of that, when it comes to sound mitigation, they've complied with everything that they need to do to make sure, to ensure that the decibels are below the threshold. If you look in that area, you'll see Harley-Davidson, perfect example. I live right in that neighborhood, and I can hear Harley-Davidson, and I guarantee you, it's way above 50 decibels. But that's fine, and I don't have an issue with it. I understand that's business, and that's the price of doing business if you want to see Titusville grow. But what I want to add is that the applicant here has mandated that he is going to be below that threshold because he realizes that he's on a major artery and that there's residential in the back. If you compare the same, if you compare the same indoor range that was previously approved by Pineido and Washington, they were right there in the heart of a residential as well. So I'm just saying, please consider apples to apples when you're looking at this. The next was the air quality. So they wanted to make sure that they were within thresholds with their quality, and so they came in, they called special vendors to come in and make sure that they can install the systems that would handle that. Another feature that they're adding is obviously for a gun range, you have to make sure that you encapsulate anything so it's not going outside the building. But to even go above that, what they're doing is called, is it, is it scattershot or fragmented bullets? So by using fragmented bullets, it's changing the makeup of the gun range. First of all, it's, it's less harsh on the environment, there's no lead abatement that needs to be dealt with, no hazardous waste, and it's, it's less of an impact. So, you know, I think that, I've gone over the codes myself, and I think that they have done everything to meet the standards that Titusville set. On top of that, I believe that, I believe that they've seen the support of the local police. Obviously, you can see from the community here, they have the support of the community, and in the past, we've talked about competition and what's good for the community. And I can tell you, I've been out to the Police Hall of Fame, they do well, they really do, and I believe that our community can definitely expand on this. They're offering something a little bit more unique than what they, than what the, I keep on saying Astronaut Hall of Fame, but it's Police Hall of Fame offers. But at the same time, sometimes they're too busy and you can't, you can't get in there. Seven ranges is very small impact when it comes to gun ranges, and I believe that they're offering educational services for our community, they're offering more recreational availability for our community. So I hope when you're considering this that you will think about that and give us a positive vote. Do you have any questions? And to let you know, we do have some expert witnesses. If you do need expert testimony, we're more than happy to allow them to come up, and we already have previously signed cards, but we're trying to minimize your time, so.
The experts would testify as to what?
Um, licensing, any type of licensing, any type of, are they complying with federal? Are they complying with state? Are they complying with local? I believe we are. I think we've checked every box that could be checked. But if you don't want to believe me, we bring the experts.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I just want to point out that Sean Williams is the immediate past chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, next card.
Justin Goudy.
I don't have anything to add. I just, I'm the applicant, and I just wanted a card in case I needed to answer any questions that anybody had.
Anyone have any questions?
I do. Just a couple of questions. Is it's going to be an indoor pistol range or rifle range too or what?
It'll be both.
And then we use frangible ammunition for both of them?
Yes, sir. Only frangible ammo, only lead-free ammo is what we're going to shoot. So that this range won't, no outside ammo will be allowed in the range, so any of the ammo that will be shot in the range will be purchased in the range so that we can have complete control over that ammunition to make sure that it's frangible and it's lead-free.
You are going to sell ammunition for outside your place of business, aren't you?
Well, in the pawn shop. So we have the pawn shop, and then we're going to have the gun range. The ammo is not going to intermingle between the two.
Okay. I noticed lane six and seven are wider.
Yes, sir.
One through five.
Yeah.
Are they going to be accessible for the handicap people?
Yes, sir.
Okay. End of my question.
Member Grant, did you have a question? My question was the same as, okay, Mr. Richardson. Member Riley.
My question is, if the previous speaker said.
There were two previous indoor ranges in Titusville. Where were those, do you know?
I know, I'm looking at the.
Yeah, I can tell you. So one of them was on Pineido Drive and Washington, and it was approved, but for some reason or another, they decided, they got the conditional use permit, but they didn't build.
Okay.
Um, and then the first one that we did was obviously the Police Hall of Fame.
So the only one that's ever been in, in the Titusville area is at the Police Hall of Fame?
Right, and that's why I said that we, we have room for growth for this type of business.
What, what is the, your experience as far as other cities of like size having an indoor gun range in the heart of town, right next to a big shopping center with homes and businesses on the other side of the street? What, what's your experience with those being approved?
Well, I'm more a layman on this, but my experience is I've seen it, I've seen it done.
Do you know where?
No, I maybe.
I, I can't answer on a city this size, but I can answer that I know in Orlando for sure, I know in Miami, I know in Jacksonville that they have gun ranges in residential areas in exactly the same way. And that's why, even, even in those ranges, they're not fragmenting rounds, they're not lead-free and fragmenting rounds, but that's one of the reasons why we're going above and beyond. So what a fragmenting round, just so you understand, is when the bullet itself hits the backstop, it shatters into dust. So there's no slug or lead that could possibly go through a wall or go through the metal, go through the wall, ricochet off, come out of the building and hit somebody, because at the point of impact, the round itself shatters.
And, and of course, the other thing is there's a school, a Titusville High School just up the road.
Mm-hmm.
I, I just, I've lived here for many years. I've never heard of an indoor range in the heart of town.
Well, it, like I said, it is done pretty much in, I can't, I don't know the size of the cities, but you can look pretty much any city, at least the size, and they have indoor gun ranges that are in residential areas that are in shopping.
But the one that comes to your mind is the Orlando?
For sure in Orlando, yeah. I know of at least three in Orlando, and I know, I've done a lot of research in visiting these ranges in the process of trying to figure out how I wanted to do it and how I could make it as safe as I could possibly make it, because that's a priority for me, more importantly than, you know, trying to run a business or to make money. Obviously, I've got a lot of liability that's involved with a range, and, and I'm, I've been here in Titusville for 20 years, so I'm invested in this community. I own that building, you know, where, where we are. I fixed that building up and brought it back. It was adept, that building was falling apart before I bought it and fixed it all up. So, you know, being a part of Titusville is super important to me, and being a good neighbor is super important to me, which is why I, I'm making sure that I'm going above and beyond and making it as safe as it possibly can.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
I do, sir.
Yes.
Uh, what are the ages of people visiting? What's the youngest that could be a customer?
That can be a customer?
Yes, sir.
With, with an adult, the youngest age is 12, with, but you have to be with a parent or guardian in order to shoot. That's the same standard as the Police Hall of Fame.
And so 12 to, so ages of, of a minor could be 12 to 17?
12 to 17?
Yes, ma'am.
But they have to have.
With a guardian or a parent.
Does it have to be a custodial guardian?
Yes, ma'am.
How, how do you screen that, please?
We, that's part of the, when people come in to sign in, they'll have to sign something that they have a minor showing that they're a custodial guardian.
But what criteria, I mean, other than a piece of paper?
Yeah, that, yeah, that's going to be.
How do they prove that they're the guardian?
They're going to have to sign a paper showing, we're going to have to take them at their word. Sure. Do I have to push a button or something?
Yeah. They want to hear you out.
Okay. They're going to have to sign the form, and we're going to have to take them at their word.
So there's no additional screening?
There's no additional screening, no, ma'am.
Does the, does the guardian present identification?
Yes, ma'am.
Only that by name?
Yes, ma'am. It's the same way.
Can it be a step parent?
At the Police Hall of Fame.
Can it be a step parent?
It can be any guardian, anybody who's a, who is a guardian of that child.
But it has to be a legal guardian.
Depends on the relationship of the, of them.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Member Riley, did you have another question? Have you previously operated a gun range before?
No, sir. No.
Okay.
I've got five pawn shops and gun shops from Titusville in Orlando and out west, but this is the first gun range that, that we've actually opened.
So as I understand you, if a couple of students aged 16 walked over from Titusville High School with money in, in their pockets and say, I want to shoot, you're going to say no?
No, sir. If somebody wanted to come in individually like that to shoot, they'd, they'd have to be 21 years of age, okay, in order to shoot.
Well, do you object to having that kind of thing as a condition for the approval? There's three conditions currently listed, but there's nothing in here about age restriction at all.
Yeah, that's fine. I, like I said, I plan on doing exactly what the Police Hall of Fame is currently doing.
Well, okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the state statute preempts the entirety of range regulations from the cities to the state, so we would not be able to place a condition. from the cities to the state, so we would not be able to place a condition regulating the ages.
Well, I view this differently. If he's voluntarily willing to do it, and we're not imposing it because he voluntarily agreed to it, I don't see any problem inserting it as a condition.
I disagree, sir. We can't insert a condition that we can't enforce. But if you're voluntarily agreeing to do it, you can do it on your own accord.
Of course. All right. I'm standing here telling everybody that that's what I'm going to do.
Well, I think that's part of the concern that already expressed about the proximity of Titusville High School.
Sure.
And so.
We already sell firearms, so we don't let kids come into our pawn shop as it is. So.
I didn't think you would have a problem with that whatsoever.
Yes, sir.
Another question, sir.
Member Fidel.
Can you discuss the signage along Washington Avenue, sir?
What's?
What will it say? What will, how big it, you know?
The signage isn't going to change basically what we have now, as far as signage goes. On the building itself, though, there, we have, I don't have a picture of it here, but we have on the building itself, you can have up to 20% of the building itself written with advertisement. And in one about six-foot section on there, we, right now, it currently, I think it says on there, "We finance guns," is what it says. We're going to paint over that and put gun range, but that's going to be the only difference for any of the signage. We're not going to have any signage out by the road. We already have the Premier Pawn Shop signage that's out there. None of that's going to change. It's not going to add any additional signage to what we currently have right now.
But you did say you were going to change the wording.
I'm saying I'm going to replace some of the existing signage on the building itself where it's painted. I'm just going to replace that word with gun range is what I'm planning on doing.
Just two words? Gun range?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And no additional up by the road?
Nothing by the road, no, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else have any additional questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Would the maximum decimal, decimal level, so 50, will this limit the type of guns that can be fired on the range?
Earlier, we didn't mention that, was that for the applicant or for staff?
Yeah. I don't care. I mean, I'm just wondering, it says that there are limitations on the noise levels.
Okay, so I just want to clarify.
I'm wondering if it's going to say you can only shoot this type of gun in this range, because otherwise they will, they will go above the allowable decibel level.
Right. So what we didn't mention earlier is that we propose an amendment to the condition regarding sound to simply conform to our current sound ordinance along residential areas. And according to opinions that we've read from the State Attorney General's office, it is permissible to bind them to the current noise ordinance.
I understand, but I'm saying if they agree to that, that noise level, then will that restrict what caliber of guns can be fired on the range to stay below the max?
I can answer it for us.
Sure.
Now, to answer your question, no, that in itself isn't going to limit what we're going to do because of the noise abatement that we're going to put into the building itself. It will resolve at where we could shoot up to any caliber. But we are going to limit the calibers and the weapons that will be shot there because of the fact that we're only going to stockpile certain ammo, and they're only going to be able to shoot ammo that they can get from us. So it's not going to be a range where anybody can bring any gun they want, and they can shoot whatever they want, because they're not going to have the ammo, because they have to get the ammo from us in order to shoot it within that range.
Okay. My other question is, what will it sound like to someone walking by? I mean, will they be, will it be identifiable as gunfire, or will it not be? What will it sound like to a person outside?
It'll sound like a knocking sound. It would not be identifiable as a gunshot. People wouldn't, nobody would call 911 and say, "A man, there was a gunshot." It sounds like a low thud is what it sounds like at 50 decibels.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else have any questions?
Here, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Not that I have one, but I was going to ask if I brought a 500 Smith &amp; Wesson, would you allow me to shoot it?
If you brought a, sorry.
500.
Smith &amp; Wesson 500?
Yeah.
No, sir, we wouldn't have that ammo on hand for you to shoot.
Okay, just ask it.
Any other questions, sir? All right. Anyone else have any questions? Yes, sir.
So you are providing weapons also?
No, sir, we're not going to be providing weapons. Oh, sorry. No, sir, we're not going to be providing weapons at the time whenever we open. We sell them in the pawn shop itself, so people can buy weapons there, but we're not, we're not providing weapons. The other thing that we're going to do, which is a little bit different than a lot of, what a lot of gun ranges do, is that we're going to require training on anybody who wants to shoot in the range. So as, if the people who come up in order to shoot in the range, we're going to actually provide them training before they're allowed to shoot in the range itself. And that's for the safety of everybody who's shooting there at the range, and so that we can make sure that people know what they're doing. So if you came to shoot up at the range today, we would have you sign up to come back tomorrow or the next day, whenever your schedule is, so that you can actually spend the 45 minutes in the lane with a certified firearm instructor who's going to teach you lane etiquette, how to load your gun, unload your gun, keep the gun down, pointing down range all the time, and talk about, you know, the safety of the range etiquette to make it a safe process for everybody involved.
Anyone else have any more questions?
Just one, sir.
Yes.
I think staff has, may have already talked about this before, but is there any screening process of customers coming in?
There is no screening process, no, ma'am.
So anybody can come in?
Yes, ma'am.
With how much money?
They can come in with how much money?
How much money do I need?
In order to shoot?
Yes.
To rent a lane so that you can shoot?
Yes, sir.
Well, we haven't even sat down on all of the specifics on what it's going to be for each range, but it's probably going to be somewhere around $25 for you to shoot.
Okay, so I can come in with $25 and a 12-year-old child, and do I have to buy the weapon from you?
No, ma'am. That's what we're saying. You can bring your own weapon.
I can bring my own weapon, but it can't be a Smith &amp; Wesson.
500, no, ma'am. That caliber is just too large of a caliber. We're not going to stock that.
Okay.
And it's a very rare weapon. People aren't, average person's not coming in. We're going to stock the stuff that people have, nine mil, three 80s, nothing, none of the exotic, really crazy weapons that hardly anybody has and that are really, really big booms and, you know, it's going to shake your head. That's not the purpose of what we're trying to do.
Can I bring in a machine gun?
You could bring in a machine gun, but, you know, you're, you're not, if you have a special license in order to have a machine gun, it depends on what kind of gun that you have, but no, we're not going to be shooting in fully automatic weapons. People aren't going to bring them in.
Do you inspect the license that I have?
If you have a fully automatic license, I would, yeah. But we're not going to, you know, we're not going to allow people to bring fully automatic weapons anyway. But yeah, if you did, I would. It's the same way to buy. You can buy fully automatic weapons in the United States, but you have to have special licenses in order to do it.
And, and so, do you sell automatic weapons?
No, ma'am, we do not.
Okay. And so how long do I get to shoot?
You rent the lane whenever you're going to shoot for however long that you want to rent it for. So if you want to shoot for an hour, or two hours, or three hours, or however long.
Is it $25 an hour?
We haven't hammered down, I don't really want to get into what those rates are going to be, and they may be adjustable as time goes, and we see, you know, how the public does and how they react.
Does my child pay too?
Yeah. Anybody who's in there shooting, I mean.
So if I bring my 12-year-old child, it'll be $25 for me?
I don't know. There may be a youth rate.
$25 for him too?
There might be a youth rate, I'm not sure. Like I said, we haven't hammered down what all the pricings are, and I'm not prepared to commit that to you today.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions anyone have?
Sir.
Yes, sir.
You may not, you may not be at this point yet, but if someone comes in who's impaired, you do have, you will have provisions or you will have controls over that.
Yes, sir.
At the time, right?
Absolutely.
Right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just to make it clear, they have to buy that fragile ammo from you.
Yes, sir.
And bring their own ammo in.
No ammo is going to be allowed into the gun shop, not even the ammo that we sell in the pawn shop. You're not going to be able to buy ammo in the pawn shop and walk it into that range. The only ammo allowed in that range, if you buy a box and you shoot half of it today and you leave and you come back next week, it can't come back into that range. You're going to have to buy another box of ammo to shoot in that range. Because I'm 100% going to ensure that I have that frangible, lead-free ammo. I don't even want lead ammo, which is what the Police Hall of Fame, they shoot lead ammo, and yet a lot of it gets sucked up, but a lot of it, the employees are breathing, the people are breathing every day because there's no way around it. And, and it's not frangible. So I'm going to ensure that by making sure that anything in that range is only what is shot that we have. Nobody's bringing anything into that range.
Chairman.
Yes, Member Ryan.
What kind of liability insurance will you be carrying?
I already have, you know, multimillion-dollar liability insurance, so I have that already with my building, with my pawn shop, and I'll have that with the gun range. Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Does your liability insurance cover a gun range?
It will, when, you know.
Your liability insurances are different depending on.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Their insuring.
I'm just saying that all my businesses are insured for multimillion dollars, and the gun range will be as well.
I mean, have you, have you looked into that?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I'm pretty sure that they're going to have requirements for you for a gun range, over and above a pawn shop.
Yes, ma'am. I understand that, and, but you'd be surprised what the liability insurance for a pawn shop is. So I carry heavy insurance at all of my locations and at the gun range as well.
Thank you.
Certainly, I think our attorney could clarify it, but as I understand it, in accordance with Chapter 823 of Florida statutes and Chapter 790, generally speaking, gun ranges are immune from liability. That was a part of legislation that was packed by our Florida legislature.
I believe that is true, but I still always carry, I've got too much at risk.
Just as a point of clarification, because there may be some confusion, and under 823, it deals with lots of issues, including exemption from liability, exemption from nuisance claims. It provides further that, except as other laws provided in this act, this act shall not prohibit a local government from regulating the location and construction of a sports shooting range after the effective date of this act. So questions concerning the location clearly and the construction to make sure it's safe are, as I read the statute, and correct me, Counselor, if I'm wrong, are appropriate questions that can be asked.
Certainly, appropriate questions, and as we discussed at our last meeting, if any of the proposed conditions that this commission may have discussed are thought out by one of the board, commission members, I recommend that while the applicant is present, I don't know that there are any more cards to be addressed in this hearing, but I recommend that you propose any additional conditions you may be thinking of to get his concurrence prior to making any vote or motion on this item.
Okay, thank you. Let me see if there are additional cards. Are there?
No, sir.
Ordinarily, don't do this, but is everyone else in the audience, except you gentlemen, in favor of this application, or is anyone opposed? All right, I don't, any other questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, has he met with local residents?
We've mailed, we have mailed local residents, letting them know that we are opening it, and if they have any concerns, and we have gotten no response from local residents.
And am I only talking about like three, two or three local residents? To the west?
Yes, ma'am. They're to the west behind the building.
Okay. Sean has his hand up.
So, let me get on the mic here. So I wanted to let you know that we did address that. I addressed that with the applicant, and I addressed that with city staff, because that was one of my concerns, and I wanted to make sure that the residents in the back had the opportunity. When, when that was proposed, it's not a requirement, but we, we did talk about it, and it was discussed, so it's not like, it wasn't thought of. But I wanted to back up real quick, and I know maybe some of you guys aren't comfortable with guns. I will tell you that, I think I got my hunter's safety course at nine years old. When I was growing up, we ran around with shotguns in the back of our trucks, and it was, you know, it was a whole different ballgame. This applicant has gone way above and beyond to meet all criteria. I looked into state law, and it basically said, "Look, you can't really regulate it." But we said, "Fine, let's, still, we want to, we want to make sure that Titusville feels comfortable with him coming in." And so he put condition after condition on himself. So he's trying to be a good steward to Titusville. He's expanded his business into other areas. This is a new venture. This isn't a cheap venture. I think he, at one point you said it's going to be a minimum of maybe $100,000 just to even get started. That is a big investment in our community. So I hope that, you know, when you're looking at this, don't be so strayed by it's a gun range. Don't be so worried that it's by a residential. All those precautions have been taken. I wouldn't be up here standing before you, because I was on your side as well, and I sat there for many, many years. And I wouldn't be up here promoting this if I didn't feel like this was something that would be good for the community. And at the same time, I think that it is, it's something that could be valuable to our community. So, thank you.
Would you like to add anything else?
No, sir, I'm done.
Okay, thank you, sir. Unless there's other questions.
I'm sorry, I have one.
Yes, go ahead.
I have one follow-up on the ammunition piece. When someone comes in, will they need to surrender their, their gun to you for inspection, and you look in their bag to make sure they're not bringing in outside ammunition? What's the process there?
Yeah. I wouldn't call it surrendering it to us, but yeah, they'd have to open and show us the gun that they're carrying in, and so we can make sure there's no other ammunition there that they're bringing into the range, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
One more question. At all times, will the seven lanes be supervised?
Yes, sir. At all times.
Any other questions? Not hearing you, thank you, sir. I have just maybe one or two more questions for staff, other than Police Hall of Fame. To your knowledge, is there any other licensed gun range operating in Titusville today?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Pardon?
No, sir.
Okay. And what zoning district is the Police Hall of Fame?
I don't know that readily. I can tell you in just a minute.
Okay. All right. Coming back to the board, commission. Do we have anyone that has further questions from the commission? Let me inquire, as suggested by the City Attorney's Office, other than the three conditions that staff suggested, are there any other conditions that you would suggest that we inquire from the applicant that he would be willing to stipulate to or agree to? I've heard two things thus far. One is the type of ammunition which he is going to supply, and two is the age issue, restriction on, anyone 17 and under has to be accompanied by a parent, legal, a guardian as such. Are there any other conditions that we've discussed other than those? And as I see that the, the ammo directly relates to construction, which we have some authority to regulate, because he's satisfied with that type of ammo, he's not going to have any problems with the construction method he's using, as I understand. Is that correct? Okay, he's indicating that's correct.
Could you clarify exactly what the proposed condition is regarding the ammunition?
Why don't you come up in the mic? So we get it correct. And also why you're adding, add the age restriction that you're stipulating or agreeing to.
Okay. The, the type of ammunition is lead-free, frangible ammunition. That's the proper name for it. And that the minimum age to shoot would be 12, and that any minor 17 or less would have to be with a guardian.
Okay, thank you, sir. I would just remind the Commission, this is a quasi-judicial proceeding, and as such, there are criteria set forth in the code that we determine whether or not it is in compliance, starting at page 33, whether it's in compliance with comprehensive plan. Number two, no problem with ingress and egress. Number three, any nuisance factors. Number four, levels of service, there's adequate solid waste, portable water. Number five, screening and buffering. Staff says that that will be reviewed at the time of permitting. Number six, signs and proposed exterior lighting. Again, that would be, probably be reviewed at the time of permitting. Hours of operation, we have a stipulation as to hours. Off-street parking, required yards and open space. General compatibility with adjacent properties and other property in the district. And number 11, whether the proposed change is out of scale with the needs of the neighborhood or the city. And 12 is special requirement. So in reviewing this, according to our process and procedure, we're determined whether or not the applicant is compliant with those conditions. If you are inclined to vote no, then you need to try to relate your objections to those criteria. So saying that is, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, if I may just include. I'd like to restate what I said earlier. I, staff cannot control what conditions you all impose on these items, but I'd like to restate that conditions regulating the type of ammunition and the, and regulating who may go into a, a shooting range are totally preempted to the state. Several Attorney General's opinions have expressed that, and I'd just like to advise you that those conditions will be unenforceable. But if you decide to move forward with those conditions, that is up to this Commission.
Well, I think we really need clarification. If you're saying if counsel accepts our recommendations and impose conditions on this, staff is not going to enforce those conditions?
I'm not saying that. The state preempts local municipalities from adding additional regulations on shooting ranges and ammunition.
Well, I respectfully disagree, because I consider the, the ammunition as a part of construction, which we can regulate. And with regard to locational criteria, as far as zoning, if it's located near residential areas and we feel as though it's a part of that, and he's willing to stipulate to not allowing a 12-year-old to come in and shoot, that we should have that ability to do that as a part of our compatibility criteria in our code. So we can respectfully disagree. You're out of order, right? Come on up, sir.
So hopefully, to maybe address your concern, I, I'm unsure, did, did you put the requirement for fragmented bullets? Is that part of the requirement, or is there's no requirement?
No.
And you're saying that you can't put that requirement?
Yes.
Okay. So I will tell you that the, the applicant has already said, this is what they're doing. If they don't do that, and so keep this in mind, if they don't do that, what happens is they have to deal with lead abatement, which is very, very expensive. This is a way around that. It's also a safer bullet. So he's, he's kind of already complying with what you're saying, because he's only going to have certain bullets. So not anybody can come in, you know, and, and shoot already. So I know it's, I know what you're saying, it's unenforceable, but he is, he's sitting here right now telling you, this is what I'm willing to do. Maybe it's more of a gentleman's agreement, but, but for him to change the, the calibers and all that, it would, it would be very costly to him, because now he's got to deal with getting rid of that lead, and that's not cheap. So that, that requires way more money. So hopefully, that helps with some of your concerns, but at the same time, he is complying with state law and federal law. I mean, he's doing everything in his power that we already currently let the other ranges. I mean, you, you have outdoor ranges, I think, in MEMS. You have the Police Hall of Fame. So, but he's telling you, look, this is what we're wanting to do.
We hear you.
Okay.
Do we have?
So before a motion is made, I would just like to state that my office has not had adequate time to review the additional conditions to adequately provide counsel, the city council, with our advice regarding whether these conditions would be acceptable or not, as they were not part of the package in the report presented tonight. And I, I can't promise you that upon further review, my office will not form an opinion, but at this time, I don't, I'm not prepared to form an opinion on the additional conditions proposed by the Planning and Zoning Commission, as far as how the city council may vote on these items as it comes before them on Tuesday night. I hope that makes sense.
Fine, certainly, this body recognized we're a recommending body, and counsel can do as they wish, so. Again, do we have a motion?
I move, we recommend the city council approval of conditional use permit number 02-2020, per the three conditions that's contained on page five of the staff memo, and the applicant's willingness to enforce an age restriction with a legal guardian, and the use of fragile ammo at all times.
Do we have a second to the motion?
Second.
Member Grant, second to the motion. Any further discussion on the motion? Let's have a roll call, then.
Member Riley? No. Secretary Spideau?
No.
Member Porter?
Yes.
Member Grant?
Yes.
Member Noel Copeland?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Richardson?
Yes.
Chairman Severs?
Yes.
That takes care of that item. We had one other item in which, right away, where we have someone present, so if we could take that item at this time, right away, number 2-2020, Hope Hammack, staff.
Okay. Sorry. Okay. The applicant is requesting to vacate portions of platted alleyways to allow the placement of stormwater facilities associated with a proposed multifamily development. The parcel surrounding the alleyways previously contained a multifamily housing complex that was condemned and demolished by the City of Titusville in 2010. Portions of the alleyways to be vacated to join other residential properties. During the site plan review process for a proposed multifamily residential development adjoining the subject right-of-way, the applicant determined that the proposed stormwater facility would require piping through one of the alleyways. Additionally, the applicant requested and was approved for several variances last year, involving building setbacks and landscape buffers for the same development. A condition of approval was imposed by the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, requiring that the placement of any improvement within the subject right-of-way would require application to vacate the same. Therefore, to move forward with the proposed project, the applicant desires to vacate the alleyways described in the associated legal description and sketch description. This request is actually an amended version of an earlier request from, that was submitted later, late last year, and voted upon in February of this year. It was recommended for approval, subject to three staff-recommended conditions by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and subsequently approved, subject to the same conditions by the city council on February 25th. The applicant was unable to fulfill the first condition, requiring that an easement be dedicated to Florida City Gas over the location of existing utilities within the alleyway, alleyway adjacent to the north of the present site. So, that's kind of small, but. It used to, the northern alleyway, if you can see that, was part of the previous request, but because they could not come to an agreement with the adjacent property owner to place an easement over that, they are amending their request simply to include the other two alleyways. And the remainder of the request remains unchanged from the previous request. No objections were made to the vacation request by any local utility, and staff recommends approval of the request as submitted. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Not hearing any. Do we have any cards on this item?
No, sir.
Okay. Unless we have questions for staff, do we have a, a motion by the Commission?
I would just note that, that plat was recorded in 1888. I think that was.
A while ago.
Before you were born, Chairman Severs.
Thank you, sir.
I move to approve the right-of-way vacation number 02-2020.
Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Members Spideau. Any discussion on the motion? Not hearing any? Roll call.
Member Grant?
Yes.
Member Riley?
Yes.
Secretary Spideau?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Richardson?
Yes.
Member Noel Copeland?
Yes.
Member Porter?
Yes.
Chairman Severs?
Yes.
Okay, now we go back to 9A, remove obsolete zoning district references. Staff.
Okay. As you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, the, the purpose of this ordinance is to remove references to obsolete zoning districts. Ordinance number 31-2010 repealed the Central Business District zoning district, and replaced that with the DMU's district. And a later ordinance removed the Commercial Marina zoning district altogether, because it had never been applied within the city. Staff has identified several instances in which these references remain in the code, and the proposed ordinance will delete these references. They will also, this proposal also completes the titles of zoning districts to be consistent with the style used in other areas of the code. And this begins on page 19 of your agenda packet. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions of staff?
Is this administrative only? There are no changes? It's just a cleanup of the documentation? Is that accurate?
That's correct. There is one statement that was eliminated, lunch wagons. We, let me go back to that. It, it states, within PID zoning districts, mobile vendor lunch wagons shall be permitted. The elimination of that, the intent of that is simply to include lunch wagons under any kind of mobile vendor. And that's all.
So it's not disallowing it? It's saying that's covered elsewhere?
Correct. It's covered under the same section, we're just not calling it out separately.
Okay.
Any other questions?
So this is basically cleanup of the existing ordinances?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Do we have a motion on this item? Do we have? Member Spideau?
Yes. I vote, I mean, I propose that we accept ordinance number 31-2010 to repeal the Central Business District zoning and replace it with a downtown mixed-use DMU district. Do I have to, do I need to say the, what we're replacing it with? Okay.
This ordinance wouldn't be repealing the Central Business District, it's just replacing obsolete language.
Okay, okay. So should I use that in, in, in the narrative?
Yes, ma'am. You can just state, or the ordinance removing reference, references to obsolete zoning districts.
I think you're doing it better than I can do it, Gabriel. To replace the central district with new proposal language.
Right.
To update, to administratively update the ordinance.
Right.
You're nodding yes. Am I okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
I think that captures the essence.
Do we have a second? Member Grant? Second. Do we have a second? Any discussion? Roll call.
Secretary Spideau?
Yes.
Member Porter?
Yes.
Member Riley?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Richardson?
Yes.
Member Noel Copeland?
Yes.
Member Grant?
Yes.
Chairman Severs?
Yes.
Passed. Next item, 9B, Site Plan Threshold.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This begins on page 25 of your packet, and this is an ordinance relating to site plan review thresholds. On August 25th, 2020, council approved advisability for staff to reassess the thresholds for site plan review to more appropriately match the level of review to potential impacts of development. The attached ordinance makes the following changes. Clarification of improvement terms, clarification of threshold for Class 1 review, removal of accessory structures less than 1,000 square feet from the Type 1 threshold. And on that, that was eliminated to streamline the review of an accessory structure, because we already review all of the, we already perform, perform all of the reviews that we do in the Class 1 site plan review at the building permit stage for these accessory, excuse me, accessory building permits. And clarification of threshold for parking lot improvements, and the combination of three or more minor improvements is now moved to a Class 2 site plan review. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff? Any questions of staff? Okay, do we have any cards on this item?
No, sir.
Returning back to the Commission, do we have further discussion and/or a, a motion concerning this item?
I make a motion to consider the ordinance and make recommendations to the council for ordinance relating to the site plan review thresholds.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? If not, then row call.
Member Noel Copeland.
Yes.
Secretary Spideau.
Yes.
Member Grant.
Yes.
Member Riley.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Richardson.
Yes.
Member Porter.
Yes.
Chairman Severs.
Yes.
Turning now to 9D, Townhouse Ordinance. Staff.
Thank you. This ordinance has to do with the minimum lot size requirement for townhomes. In response to citizen requests at their July 28th council meeting, City Council requested staff provide advisability for minimum lot size requirements for townhomes in the R2 and R3 zoning districts. Currently, there is a five-acre minimum lot size requirement for townhomes. Staff has researched the, has researched this requirement, have not found any justification for the requirement. In addition, the requirement limits the townhomes for infill development. The proposed ordinance would eliminate the five-acre minimum lot size requirement for townhomes in the R2 and R3 zoning districts.
Any questions for staff?
Yes, sir.
It would eliminate the five-acre requirement, but would it, would there be any other limits? I mean, one acre, two acre? Or is no acreage whatsoever? Anywhere you can put it, that's okay?
We do have minimum, minimum acreage requirements for the units, so depending on the number of units that you put in, I can look that up in just a moment.
What's the minimum lot size for R2 and R3?
That's what I'm going to look up. For R2, for a townhome, it's 3,000 square feet per unit.
That's the unit itself, or the acreage that can be, that it can be put on?
That would be the lot size.
Okay.
Requirement for each townhome.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions of staff? Do we have any cards on this item?
No, sir.
Commission, any further discussion and/or motion?
Yes, Member.
To the city.
Currently, there are difficulties with infill sites and sites that are small. Allowing townhomes on there are difficult, well, they're not, it's not possible when the infill site is less than five acres. Or redeveloped.
For example, what we considered, the vacation of those rights-of-way, or whatever it was.
That site.
That's not five acres, but I think it's appropriately zoned for R2 or R3. Now, they could be located on, is that correct?
Yes.
That would be an example.
Yes, sir. Right.
Who brought, excuse me, ask another question.
Go ahead.
Who brought this up?
There was a citizen request after a, there was a request that was withdrawn after it was determined that a citizen could not apply for a townhome development on a parcel of land along Elizabeth Avenue, and I can't remember where the other street was now, but maybe Queen Street. Do you remember? Queen. And this citizen petition, the council, and council asked staff to review the requirement for five acres.
So, this is something that if, if, if the City Council approved it, this person could go ahead and make, build their townhome?
Yes, ma'am. As long as they meet all the other requirements, development requirements. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Do we have some citizens here in the audience that are interested in this item?
I need to ask one question.
Did you fill out a card?
Yes, I filled out my, Tramilla Johnson.
Was it left at there?
Yeah.
Can I ask a question in the meantime?
Go ahead.
Okay, it says staff has researched the history of this lot size requirement and have been unable to determine, should be, has been unable to determine the reasons for the requirement. Can you clarify what that means, please?
Staff has not been able to determine any concrete justification as to why there is a minimum lot size requirement for the, within that zoning district.
So, it was just an arbitrary definition?
It may not have been arbitrary, but staff wasn't able to find justification for that. But at the time that it was enacted, there may have been a reason for it.
Do you know when it was enacted?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
At least 15 years it's been in place.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, have we got some cards?
Tramilla Johnson.
Hi, my name is Tramilla Johnson, and I live at 13 Hydrant, Elizabeth Avenue, Titusville, Florida. And the townhouse that you were mentioning was right across the street from my house. And the guy wanted to put 28 townhouses in a 2.8 acre. Wasn't enough space, well, and the opening of the driveway was going to be right in front of my door. So, now they're taking it and moving it on the, behind me. They, they withdrew that petition, and now they're did a, I guess they come into City Hall to re-amend the townhouse acre to build townhouses right behind me. Like, they couldn't do it in the front, so then they turned around and moved it to the back. It's in a residential area, not said that, don't mind them building, it's a multifamily area that they're talking about. Amending the townhouses. Want to put the townhouses in instead of the multifamily homes. That mean that they could put more townhouses in that little space instead of building regular multifamily homes. We don't mind the multifamily homes. I don't, but the traffic that we're going to have when it comes into that area is going to be really bad. Really congested because of the amount of how, or townhouses that they want to put in that area. And we just want to know if they could not put it on Elizabeth Avenue, then they're going to try to train, change, amend the townhouse, the minimum of acres, and put them in the back. So, we just want to know what is the requirement? How many houses, how many townhouses can they put in such a small congested place? Because one wanted to put 28. We don't know how many they're going to put behind us. And that's by them amending the law going in the back door instead of going through the front door. So, we just, we just want answers. We just want to know what they're going to do and if they can do this.
Chairman.
Okay, staff, do we have an answer?
Okay, so, we're, we're talking about two separate processes here. This ordinance would remove the five-acre requirement. The process that you're talking about is a site plan. Now, the latest indications from the applicant is that they were planning on doing a planned development for this site, which would mean that it would be subject to a public hearing. You would have input on that. If they were to build a straightforward multifamily, they would not have to do a planned development. And I'm trying to figure out right now, the density in R2, and this is zoned R2 or R3? Do you remember? Okay. The density in R2 is 90, nine units per acre. Oh, is it R3? Okay. So, R3 is...
15.
15. Now, we have lot area minimums that are almost exactly the same for multifamily and townhomes. Townhomes have 2,000 square foot lot area minimums. Multifamily has 2,500. So, we would have to factor both of those to see how much they could fit in there. I'm going to search the acreage now. If I can remember where this is. There it is, Queen Street.
One of the points that Mr. Gabriel Quintez was trying to make that I'd like to point out, as he did state, is that this is an ordinance change that affects all of the zoning throughout the city. It's not the specific project application to the project that's near your home. I understand your concerns, but this particular property is one of many throughout the city that may be subject to the impact of this development, which is why we call it a legislative hearing regarding this ordinance and changes to the zoning requirements.
Yes, and I understand that, but if you turn around and you amend it now, that mean that he can do whatever he want to do on that, do the townhouses without any notice? Will that be, is that correct?
No, not necessarily, because there would be a process that, as we've, as we've heard from the applicant who wants to work on this property, that one of the first steps forward is to ask the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council if they would agree with removing the five-acre requirement, the minimum five-acre. And if not, then there's another option on the table where the property owner could ask for a variance, and a variance may be required for other aspects of the development. So, a variance would require the property owner to, again, come before a different body, the Board of Adjustment and Appeals, to determine if a variance from the code is permissible for this site, which is a different board having a different set of standards. And if this property is going to submit a sketch plat under the R3 zoning district, then this commission, again, would review it, and then City Council would have to review it. So, there's going to be a number of public hearings before the property and the project is finalized as it's been proposed. And throughout those public hearings, certain conditions and requirements may be imposed on the developer.
Yeah, we just trying to understand what is going on, and if they can do it or cannot do it, and if they do it, do the amendment, that, we don't have any questions, but you explained that there's other ways that he has to do, or the developer would have to do in order to build the townhouses.
There will be additional public hearings before the project is finalized. I can promise that that is the case for this site, as I have heard already of particular issues that may either require a variance or the public hearing for rezoning for the sketch plat. And I'd turn it over to Gabriel to comment on what he knows about this property.
When is, when is this advertised for, for City Council?
This ordinance?
Yes.
I'm not sure, sir.
November the 10th.
November the 10th? Okay.
That's what this guy said.
Let me just say this, what my concern is with ordinances, sometimes there's unattended consequences, and this could be one of those. And we have to be careful now, if they already have the proper zoning category, and we change this regulation to eliminate the five acres, it doesn't come before Planning and Zoning Commission or the City Council.
Correct.
They can just build it.
Correct. The plan, the public hearings that the Assistant City Attorney was referring to could be like variances, variances to landscape.
If they want to build a PD, that would be a public hearing process.
Correct.
But if, if this is changed, and they want to build townhouses, and there's no minimum size, they can draw up their plans, submit it to site plan approval, and get a permit and build it, as I understand the rules.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir. As long as they meet all of the development requirements.
Correct.
Once this is in place, if it is in place.
Okay.
So, based on lot size, how large, how many units could they build on that property?
It really depends. It's, it's not very, I'm going to say a figure, but it's not, it's not realistic. Right now, the lot size is 2.93 acres, and we're talking about something that's totally unrelated to this ordinance, but that lot for which an application was submitted for a townhome development on Elizabeth and Queen, it's 2.93 acres times 15, that gives you 43.95. We round down, so 43. But they still have to accommodate all of the stormwater on the site, the parking, the landscaping, so I can tell you with full certainty that they cannot arrive at that 43 units.
Member Riley had a question.
Is there any possibility that this could be tabled until we find out, if staff could find out why the five-acre limit was put on the books whenever it was?
Staff has done extensive research on that, and we have not found the reason for it. It's been on the books for a while, but I can almost assure you, we won't find the reasoning for it.
You don't know when it came into effect, the five acre?
No, ma'am.
What I mean, what I'm saying is if you could find out when that came into effect, you could maybe research around there to see what the reasoning was.
Research, I'm sorry.
If, if you were able to determine when, when, when City Council made the requirement of the five acres, then possibly researching that era of time, you know, minutes of meetings, whatever, maybe you could determine it.
Okay. Well, I mean, if that's the position of this commission...
I'm just throwing it out as a possibility. I'm not...
The only bit of information that we found was that it may have been related to patio homes, which are not allowed anymore, or are allowed in certain circumstances but are not a specific use in our table of uses anymore. And they were also lumped in with that five-acre restricted, restriction. So, whether or not that was intended for the patio homes and the townhomes were just lumped in, I'm not sure. But I can, I can almost guarantee we're not going to find the answer, because there aren't explanations many times as to why certain things were put into the code, especially when there's an adoption of a large amount of, or a revision of the entire code or several sections of the code.
In staff's analysis of this project, the applicant has submitted previously a request to rezone the property to PD. That has not, has it officially been withdrawn?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, it has been withdrawn.
Okay. If the applicant desires to go through, and there's a time limit on the application period, which required that applicant to withdraw it in order for staff not to have to process it, correct?
She voluntarily withdrew it, but...
All right. The PD requires a master plan, which can only be approved with variances to landscaping requirements in Chapter 30, and the variance include the width of landscape yard and amount of vegetation in landscape yards. And now, of course, this is an application that has been withdrawn, but I am looking for research on this particular property because that's what's being discussed. But I can tell you that the Planning Department, Peggy Bisaka, has met at length with my office, the City Attorney, Richard Broome, to discuss the history of this five-acre requirement. And as was stated by Navial at the beginning of this presentation, we could not find the basis or justification for this minimum five-acre requirement. And now, if the commission is desiring to modify it rather than delete it, then we'd be happy to discuss and review that as an alternative to the proposed ordinance that would delete it. But I don't believe that tabling this for research as to the history will provide any conclusive additional information, because that's already been done. And now, I don't have... And now, I don't have the date of the approval in front of me, and I'm sorry for not having that at the tip of my tongue. I wish I did, because I know that that research has been done, but I didn't think that that was gonna be a question for tonight. And if that's an answer, then we could do a recess, and I could pull it up and just focus on that. But I like to listen to what everyone is saying.
Okay, getting back to the order of the lights, Member Spideau, you're next, then Member Richardson.
I realize that this affects throughout the city and the code of R2 and R3, just not specifically of the concern of this petitioner. I understand that. On the other hand, I'd like to have her describe the character of her neighborhood right now.
Okay. My neighborhood is, we're new, but we're old. It has been a part of Titusville for the last 100 years. It is the, where most of the, I'm gonna say blacks lived, parted, was in. It's in that area. Nobody wanted it. I've been here 65 years. I was just able in 2004, 2004. The property that I'm living on was, was wood vacant. Nobody lived on Elizabeth Avenue, but there are Forbes and two other families.
Are these single-family homes?
These are single-family homes.
And, and you've been here...
I've been there since 2004.
In a single-family home?
There was nothing but woods. There was the area, nothing but woods, nothing. One of the, you would say, almost part of the worst part of Titusville, but I decided I want to stay in my neighborhood. I was, I was asked to build a pla, build my home somewhere else. But this is where I want to be, and I want to build up the area that I live in with single-family homes. If you, it's, it's basically...
Do these lovely women live near you?
Yes, Ms. Forbes and her daughter. Ms. Forbes was living there before I were.
Chairman, or can she speak?
A Kresha Ford.
With these peo, for these people?
So, she was living there. I bought the property from them, from her and her husband. And I, we're building, we're trying to build up that street with, with homes. We have one more person, Mr. James Lotters, he's building a house there. It's a single-family home. That's what we're trying to put in that area is, is in, is single-family homes, which there's two other homes, both of them are vacant, because one guy died and another one moved away. But on the corner of Elizabeth and Whispen Hill, on the right-hand side, is vacant, is a vacant lot. It's 2.98 acres. And that piece of property has been sold five times. And then a guy, some, this guy wanted to build, it was, it is a mother family, his zone is mother family. He wanted to put townhouses there. He wanted to put 28 townhouses there. He gave us a copy of the drawing and all of that. I mean, if he, if that takes place, it would be so crowded in that area. It would be, I mean, you'll have all kind of people living there, everything, because there's no way that you's going to be able to sell a house for $200,000 in that area. And that's what he quoted to us that each townhouse would cost.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Member Richardson, you were next. Well, do we have another card on this item?
I think so.
Yes.
Okay, let's call that, and then I'll have my speak.
Travis Williams.
Good evening, good evening. All right. My name is Travis Williams. I'm a real estate investor. I own 16 lots on Elizabeth Avenue, 1,400 Elizabeth Avenue is the address. I'm for the project. I'm for the rezoning. And the reason why I'm for it, I don't think people get the full understanding, okay? That community is very impevish, okay? It's an impevish area, okay? The side of the road that I own, 1,400, that's the same side that she live on. One side of the road is single-family. The other side of the road is multifamily, okay? I spoke to the representative for the development. Her name was Kim. I can't think of her last name. So, my idea, and I proposed to her, to where the community is missing jobs, okay? It's Elizabeth Avenue runs parallel with De Leon Avenue, okay? So, when I spoke to the developer representative, I asked her, if they was to do this development, would a certain percentage of the workforce come for, come from the neighborhood? They agreed, okay? I also asked them, there's African-American general contractors. Would they have an opportunity to bid for the work? They agreed, okay? So, don't get me wrong, I understand their gripe, okay? And I'm not strongly for it. If it happens, it happens. If it don't, it don't. Me and my business partners are in the process to doing 14 single-family homes on the same side. We working with Paul Ballerton and Steve Adams, okay? I think that community really need the jobs, okay, to be good for the community. They're saying single-family homes, but that'd, that'd still be people that's coming in the area that's not from the area, and money getting, it's all about circulation of the dollar. That's one of the biggest problems right now in that area. All right, I was born and raised here. I own 20 lots from De Leon to Elizabeth, okay? And I'm in the process of developing those lots, all right? The real gripe should have been with the person, the people who sold the land before, okay? Because like I say, I'm a developer, so I don't, I just don't understand how someone can come in and they buy the land, and then you can kind of dictate what I do with the land, you know? I mean, I don't agree with that. You know, if they paid their dollar, I think it was initially, the land went on sale for like 80,000, okay? Our African-American church bought the land, and they had proposed to do something with it. I guess the zoning wasn't right, so they didn't put it up for sale. They sold it to a developer, okay? So, that's who the gripe was to the, they sold it for 80,000, gave it away. As of we speak right now, I mean, you see there's no one here representing it, because they got it wrapped back up for sale for, I think, like 369,000, you know? So, I guess what they're trying to do to attach it to the seller of the property, okay? I'm not for the 43 or whatever the actual number is, but I am for the 28, okay? Because I also own a nonprofit organization, okay, Urban Alliance, and it's geared towards helping convicted felons get employment and helping low-income families become homeowners, okay? She spoke of, I want to say, the $200,000 mark on townhomes. That area, the comps on that area would be the highest, 135, 140 at the highest. So, I guess the, the fear is gentrification, okay? But that's not a developer fault, because people in the community can't afford a $140,000 townhome. You know, let's be realistic, you know? So, the developers, the resistance they got from the community, they're ready to back out, understand? Because like I just told you, the community don't understand. Don't get me wrong, and no disrespect to anybody here, but I get at least two to three texts a week about housing, okay? You got a lot of convicted felons in that area. So, apartment complexes, certain areas, they won't let them rent, okay? A lot of outside investors coming in and spiking up the rent. So, it's, the rent area is, is kind of high now. And once again, you gotta make three times the rent, and you gotta have a clean background, you know? So, once again, I spoke to the investors and seen what kind of resistance would there be, you know? And they're willing almost to bend anyway, you know?
Let me just interrupt you. That item you're talking about is not on our agenda. So, it's, I appreciate the background information we're getting. The only thing on our agenda tonight is elimination of the five acre threshold for townhouse development. As I see it, we have until November the 10th, when this will be heard before City Council. So, we have additional time at our next meeting to further review this item if members of, of this commission have additional questions or concerns. As I understand it, the discussion is trying to find out any additional information, which may not exist, as to where the five acre threshold occurred or when or why. The other thing is, I think we need to make sure whenever we eliminate something of that nature, that we understand the consequences. It may be good, it may, may be bad. So, I would like to see some examples in your community or examples in other locations as to how this could be applied. And I would respectfully suggest, and I'll recognize others, that we table this item unless we have additional cards to our next meeting. Member Richardson, I think you were sort of the last one. Did you?
Yes, I, I think presenting this to us to strike one line in the three-page ordinance without a lot of background information causes us to delay any action. I move that we delay this item until our next regular meeting.
Do we have a second to the motion?
I second.
We have two seconds. Member Riley seconded the motion. Any discussion on the tabling request? Otherwise, let's have a roll call.
Hi, I have one request when we come back to this. I'd like to know how many infill lots in Titusville would be impacted? It sounds like part of the reason to do this is to encourage building on infill lots. So, I'd like to know what the actual impact there is.
And I think you're correct. There are a lot of infill lots, a lot.
If I may, I'm not sure that we're gonna be able to get that information in two weeks. That may take another few weeks, maybe four, six, I'm not sure. But staff has a lot of work right now with other ordinances, so...
I just don't want to hold, that we're holding this up, but going to City Council. That's what I'm trying to do.
Right, and I can, I can tell you now that we cannot do an analysis. It is very unlikely that staff can do an analysis with the current workload in two weeks.
I don't want this to be another end run. Do you need a second? There is a motion on the table.
Okay, any, any clarifications on the motion?
Already.
Oh, did she?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
What's the current status of our motion?
You have a second, so point of order, you call for a vote.
Okay, roll call.
Chairman Richardson?
Yes.
Secretary Spideau?
Yes.
Member Porter?
Yes.
Member Noel Copeland?
Yes.
Member Riley?
Yes.
Member Grant?
Yes.
Chairman Severs?
Yes.
Just to clarify, the motion is simply to table the item until the next regular meeting?
That's what I understood.
Yes, and if you come up and tell us you're not prepared, just tell us. Because we've got these citizens that came out tonight and sat through this. And we don't, we didn't really know what was going on at the time we first discussed this. So, we need to think about it and have more participation from the staff, the legal staff, and the citizens before we discuss this again. And if it comes up to the council at the meeting that's posted on your card and we haven't acted on it, you should attend that council meeting and tell them that we tabled it.
We appreciate the input of the residents.
Okay, the next item is 9E, ordinance correcting code references.
Thank you. Staff has identified a number of corrections to the code references based upon the code update adopted in 2016. The proposed ordinance makes the needed corrections. Thank you.
Are there any substantive things that we should, that you would like to highlight for us that we ought to be concerned about? I mean, some of these are just changing shuttle to spacecraft.
Right.
That's not a substantive, but are there other things in there that we should be, that should be highlighted that we should be concerned with?
I know, Mr. Chairman, I, if, I mean, I don't want to define the word substantive, but...
Define it however you want to, then you're, you got it covered.
These are just changes, very minor changes, that would not result in what I view as substantive changes to the code.
Okay, any questions of staff by any members?
What pages the ordinance on?
Member Riley?
That's on page 61 of your agenda.
Thank you.
Any other questions by the commission of staff?
It just appears to be changing of titles, basically.
Yes, sir.
I read through it a couple of times.
Yes, sir.
I had to stay awake when I went through it.
Okay, not hearing anything. Do we have any cards on this item?
No, sir.
Coming back to the commission? Any questions or do we have a motion?
I move we recommend the council the adoption of the ordinance correcting code references. Then I have a...
Member Porter?
Second.
Second? Any discussion? Roll call.
Member Riley?
Yes.
Member Grant?
Yes.
Member Porter?
Yes.
Secretary Spideau?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Richardson?
Yes.
Member Noel Copeland?
Yes.
Chairman Severs?
Yes.
Next item, as I say, we've done Hope Hammock, 11A, City Council summary of action.
It's provided on page 101. Staff has no report on that item.
Any member of the commission have any questions? One thing I'd like to point out, on October the 13th, after reviewing the agenda, and in particular, I'm not sure which page it's on, page 107, there was a reference to what action the Planning and Zoning Commission took at their meeting on September 16th. This is on the Willow Creek matter. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the ordinance 5 to 2. And then it goes on to say, the Planning and Zoning Commission further recommended 5 to 2, that staff review this subdivision and development process to prevent the filling of wetlands. Prior to change in open space, I sent an email to the city manager, a copy and our Assistant City Attorney, copied and our secretary, and Wander Wells, advising that that was incorrect. Likewise, the report to council at page 160 had an error in that our vote was unanimous to recommend that review. And so, I just want to point out, I took that action because I noted in reviewing the agenda that it was incorrect. because I noted in reviewing the agenda that it was incorrect. So beyond that, the next item on our agenda is petitions and requests from the public present. I'm sorry, skip. No petitions or requests from the public present. Our next item is city staff.
A city staff has no report.
City staff has no report. Next is chairperson. I have a couple of items I'd like to mention. Give me just a second. Number one, I appreciate staff getting to us the contact procedure primarily relating to city boards and commissions. And now we do have some contact information to what we are supposed to do in the event that situation should arise. Secondly, all of us received on the commission an indication that they would be sent to the city council for council agenda September the 22nd, the draft comprehensive plan incorporating the commission's recommendation. Staff, what is the status that looking at the September the 22nd council meeting? I did not see it on the agenda. Do we know what the status of that is?
No, sir, I don't know. No, I have no comment on that because I don't, sorry.
Well, that was from your cohort, Mr. Parrish. He sent that to all of us that it was going to be presented that day. So I'm just following up. The next item is, at the last meeting, we voted 5 to 2 in favor of approving the rezoning on Willow Creek Miranda project. And the city council has approved that and took other action. The reason why I'm bringing that up is because during our meeting, it was stated numerous times as reflected on page 3 of our minutes, twice on that page and on page 4 and page 5 of our minutes. Basically, the following. Mr. Honeycutt said that they had worked out with city staff on this a year ago and the procedures were spelled out on the approved plans. That is how to convert those lots from one classification to another. Again, it says, Mr. Honeycutt said the procedure they followed were spelled out on the plans. To my knowledge, none of us had a copy of that procedure. I certainly didn't have a copy of that procedure and I didn't know for sure what that procedure was. In addition, at the city council meeting, same thing, likewise. Representations were made as to the procedure that was to be followed as such. And I'd like to pass out to you what I think the procedure was. If you don't mind, could you pass that out for me? I have exhibits for each item on this listing, but I sort of list the history of this project. And starting really with number four, the sketch plat of 61 lots was approved June 12th, 2018 with several community parks with conservation land use. And I say exhibit one attached, and you'll see that attached. And you will likewise see the, attach the sketch plan which shows track I, J, and K. In addition, I obtained a copy of those documents that Mr. Honeycutt was referring to. And you will see on exhibit 2, which is page 14 or 15 of the plans itself, procedure to convert park tracks I, J, and K to residential lots. And you will see 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. The first one, wetland jurisdictions, getting the St. John's permit and taking care of mitigation and then applying for the rezoning and amending the sketch plat. You don't see on that outline a procedure applying for preliminary plat approval, securing a permit and construction of the improvements and plat approval. And frankly, once someone is representing this as the procedure we agreed to follow, it wasn't followed. I gather that from what I heard at the council meeting, and I have a transcript of that. What was, what did occur is the staff, not this staff, primarily Peggy Busakata's responsibility for this. That's what she said at the council meeting for the way this was handled. But clearly, the procedure outlined that parties that agreed to was not followed because there's nothing in this procedure of securing the approval of preliminary plat, filling the wetlands and for final plat approval and then coming for the rezoning. Matter of fact, Mr. Honeycutt applied for the rezoning in December of 2000, in November, excuse me, of 2019. It would have been helpful for me to know what the procedure agreed to was. And there was a lot of discussion about that at the council level. I'm glad to see that they're going to address the issue about filling of wetlands. I mean, I strongly, respectfully disagree that you can issue a permit to fill wetlands for a use that's not permitted in the zoning district attached to the land. For example, you certainly can secure a permit to build a single-family residence, one unit on five acres. And if you need to build up the pad and fill that area and build a road into it, that's an allowable use in the zoning district. That was not followed here at all. And I think it's important that we follow our codes and ordinances. As Mr. Honeycutt said, he had never processed it this way. And I said, I had never seen it done this way. And I respectfully disagree with Peggy Busakata on how this was handled where, as Member Murray of this commission said, we basically have no choice, the wetlands have already been destroyed. And frankly, if they simply had followed the procedure as outlined and apparently agreed to, we wouldn't have had that problem at the last meeting. So that's what bothers me. And since I had not seen the procedure, that's why I'm sharing with you so you can see what the procedure apparently was. If you have any questions about that, commissioners, I'll be happy to answer them. The second thing, probably most of you are not familiar with the Brookshire development across from South Lake Elementary and its approval process and the history of that development. But in any event, and the reason why I feel is always relevant to bring it up is because we have changed the code by ordinance 27-2019. And we are in the process of considering two other tree ordinance, an LID ordinance, and what's going to happen with those, I don't know. But I learned within the last few days that the permit for the construction of the improvements has been extended. And I will pass out to you as well. Gabriel, do you mind? Missing the cover page, sorry about that. The Brookshire sketch plat was originally approved in January 9th of 2018. I was not on the commission, no one else here was on the commission at that time. The engineering plans were approved February 13th, 2019. I mean, the primary reason why I developed an interest in this property because some people working for the city told me there was a consideration of granting a variance and cutting the hills on this land, which in my opinion were contrary to the area of critical concern ordinance. So I asked questions about it. Later, that request was withdrawn for the variance. And so I asked staff, not this staff, to please let me know when they submitted revised plans. Unfortunately, I was not advised that plans had been revised. And after February the 13th, 2019, I learned that they had been already approved. So I sent a letter in April and May of 2009 questioning their approval because in my opinion, at that time, they did not comply with the code, they did not comply with the comprehensive plan. Apparently, that's what I indicated to, in a seating meeting with the city manager, staff, and the mayor, was relayed to the developer. And he appeared before city council on May the 28th, 2019 and requested council to review and clarify the code concerning some items I had expressed concerns about. They authorized that review and started the process, ultimately resulting in ordinance 27, 2019 to be prepared and reviewed. Ultimately, that ordinance was adopted on November 12th, 2019 after input from the Planning and Zoning Commission and from an expert witness. In the meantime, unbeknownst to a lot of people, even though the developer had requested that the code be reviewed and clarified, he decided to obtain his permit for the development and secured the permit on September 19th, 2019 for phase one. And even though he was the one that asked for the ordinance that was ultimately approved. And since that permit was issued on September 19th, I asked the question a few days ago, what is the status of that permit since it had appeared to me to probably be expired because they last for one year? And the response I received was the letter, which is the one dated October 6th, 2020. And the city attorney's office and I have talked a little bit about this. We probably respectfully disagree with one another to some degree. And I don't expect an answer tonight on this issue. But my concern, I mean, this all involved Hurricane Doran, which, as we all know, certainly severely damaged the Bahama Islands, but did not strike the state of Florida because it stayed east of us. And we had very minimal impact upon Bivard County and the city of Titusville. According to Florida statutes, once the governor declares a state of emergency, the time period on permits is told or can be told if you meet these criteria. And the concern I have is the letter says, clearly to me anyway, that the construction permit issued on September 19th for phase one will be told for that period plus six months as required by statute. The problem with that logic, that permit hadn't even been issued. So you can't toll something that doesn't even exist. So I would respectfully think this, the city needs to look back and clarify this because how can you toll something? Admittedly, you may be able to toll the preliminary plat approval of February 13th, 2019. The only reason why this is important to the Planning and Zoning Commission, I think to some members of city council, is if we impose new and additional requirements, for example, tree preservation, for example, low-impact development. And we've already changed the retention requirements in the area of critical concern. And whether they're going to abide by that or not abide by that, I don't know. But I think we need the ability to require the development to comply with our current codes. And so I'm bringing this to your attention. No action is required whatsoever. But historically, Gabriel, as you know, I do ask the status of permits and updates on items. This is the one I've been following because I honestly, strongly believe it has a significant impact upon our area of critical concern and needs to be reassessed and relooked at, et cetera. So this is something for your information that I felt like I needed to share with you as far as the current status. And certainly, you and I have talked. And certainly, if you would like to respond or however you want to proceed, fine.
Thank you. As was stated, the statute that applies to the extension of permits or development orders is attached in Chairman Severs' packet number 252.363. And this request is made oftentimes by developers that are in the process of moving forward with the project, oftentimes before the project is started in order to extend the duration of the project's life. And the Florida legislature, combined with the governor of the state of Florida, have the power to enact the executive order. And the associated rights that are contained therewith are something that the city doesn't have a choice in deciding whether or not it would, it shall, it should be granted because it says it shall by the statute, okay? And the date of September 19th, yes, came after the hurricane executive order was issued on April 28th, 2019. However, the executive order continued in effect the total duration of the state of emergency. As ridiculous as this sounds, it's 294 days. And within that initial emergency order, which you could look up at 19 number 189, the date was issued August 28th, 2019. The next one was issued August 29th, 2019, number 19-190. The next one was issued August 29, 2019, number 19-190. We have a chart that analyzes the date of each executive order, and the final expiration of that state of emergency was June 16, 2020. The statute prescribes a period of time within which the developer must contact the municipality to request this extension. It must be done in writing. Chapter 252 prescribes the procedure. And the developer contacted the city within the appropriate timeframe at the expiration of the Hurricane Dorian state of emergency on July 15, 2020. At that time, we were in the midst of the COVID-19 emergency order, which also affects Brevard County. The city, as you noted in the letter, responded that the city cannot agree to any proposed extension date or comment further on any extension related to COVID-19 as the declared state of emergency is ongoing. I want to comment also that the planning department, the planning director, Peggy Bisaka, did meet with my office prior to responding to this letter to confirm that the city has received the statutory extension request. I'd be happy to answer any further questions if you have any.
As the attorney indicates, the COVID question has not really been addressed. I mean, it's interesting if the governor can issue a declaration of emergency, provide exemptions in it for essential services such as construction workers, and none of the construction projects stopped because of the COVID virus, and now they would claim an extension of those permits. It doesn't make sense to me. Either it's, and I don't think staff has fully addressed that issue yet because they haven't been required to do so, but how in the world can we extend something that they were not prohibited from doing? And with regard to, you know, the statute itself, the title alone says tolling and extension of permits or other authorization. This permit didn't even exist at the time Hurricane Doran. And the gentleman, he took out the permit knowing that the hurricane existed and passed I think not only, I think that the city of Titusville, together with the League of Cities, needs to do a better job in protecting itself and protecting its codes and ordinances and protecting some, because, as you can see, as council indicated, Hurricane Doran, 290 days or whatever it was, and virtually had no impact in Titusville or Brevard County. So I just would hope that the League of Cities, the city of Titusville, because if we are enacting ordinances that we want to improve the city of Titusville, we ought to have the initiative to follow up on that. Any members of the commission have any thoughts that they would like to comment upon? If not, yes, Mr.?
We talked about reports?
Yes.
Yeah. I attended that canopy, tree canopy, virtual training session, and I was real surprised. Florida is basically divided up into five or six levels of tree canopy. And we're in the central east section of the state, and we're practically leading in that area, 41% tree canopy.
Wow.
So that was a real interesting training session. Secondly, I would like to point out, if you haven't been to Target, notice the stations where electrical vehicles will be recharged. They have two for, you know, non-Tesla vehicles to be recharged, and 15 stations for Tesla vehicles to be recharged, 17 charging stations in the Target parking lot. Now, that's progress. And the third thing is, I've asked Gabriel several times, but Popeyes is on the way, isn't it?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I didn't have any reports, but I just want to, I wanted to ask the commission a few things on a motion that was passed earlier, and I failed to ask this at the time, and I apologize. The first thing is clarification on the additional conditions. I'll read it out loud, and please correct me if this is not what the commission represented. To require that the ammunition used at the range be only frangible ammunition, and two, the requirement that all minors over the age of 12 years but under 18 be accompanied by a related adult. Is that correct?
No.
Okay.
The guardian, legal guardian. The legal guardian, and a, over 12 years old, by legal guardian. Well, yeah, but I didn't make that as a formal condition. I made it as what the applicant has agreed to.
Okay, so the motion passed with the three staff conditions and no additional conditions.
And I noted that the applicant-
Be careful. That's not what I understood.
And that's why I wanted to clarify it here.
Agreed to two additional items.
Well, effectively, if you include that in the motion, that would be two additional conditions, so.
As agreed to by the applicant.
My understanding that is that the planning and zoning recommended two additional conditions above and beyond what staff published.
As agreed to by the applicant.
Okay, so the second one was the requirement that all minors between the ages of 12 and 17 years, and what was the rest?
Be accompanied by a legal guardian.
By a legal guardian.
It was just guardian. The word legal wasn't used in the discussion.
Okay, so guardian. Is this the understanding of the entire commission?
Pardon?
Is this the understanding of the entire commission?
It was my understanding I used the word legal because I was questioning it.
Insert the word legal. I'm happy with it.
Okay. If the word legal was not used, we cannot insert it because it's already been voted on.
I asked him, I asked him how he was, how he was screening. He said he had no screening process. I said, are these legal guardians? He said, there's no screening.
Okay.
They just come in.
So, however, Mr. Richardson, since you motioned.
That was my intent. I don't know how a guardian, it's not legal.
Okay, so we'll leave it at guardian. And the other thing that, is that acceptable? Okay. The other thing that I failed to ask were the members in opposition, because this was a quasi-judicial item, would you please state the reasons for your opposition?
My opposition is it's not compliant with the community, surrounding community, which includes a funeral home and several residential properties.
Okay, thank you.
I can also say that I think it's too close to a public school. But I don't know the exact, you know, space.
My objection had to do with numbers 3, 10, and 11. I don't have them in front of me, but whatever those were.
The criteria?
Yeah.
Three, 10?
Three, 10, and 11.
Okay. Thank you. That was all from me.
Okay. Any other member of the commission have any reports?
I do.
Yes.
I'd like to address the conversation from last meeting regarding attendance of the alternate members. I've been on the board since November of 2017. I've been an alternate for the entire time. I have a job which during non-COVID times requires some level of travel. And when I first applied, I was very candid about that. And I stated the reason that I wanted to be an alternate, because I didn't want to get into this situation where if I missed three meetings, I was going to be removed from the board. Each time that there's been a regular vacancy, I've been contacted about filling that vacancy. And each time, I've reiterated with my travel schedule and the fact that I don't want to get sideways with the board because I can't attend. In the three years that I've been on the board, this is the first time anyone has suggested that alternates should attend all meetings. I do receive notice for all regular and special sessions. I respond pretty much immediately as to whether or not I'm available to attend, and then I follow up and ask specifically if a seat will be available. And I don't believe there's ever been a time that I've said I'm available and they've, you know, and I've found out there's a seat, but I have not attended. I do my homework, I come prepared, and I participate in the meetings. If, we've, in that meeting, it was discussed that there's an expectation that members will confirm their attendance by end of day, the Monday prior to the meeting, and I don't see any reason that a member could not review the agenda and also indicate whether they have a conflict on an item that they would not be able to address, which would, again, open up an available seat for an alternate. Although I have both a life and a job, I attended eight of the sessions of the APA conference a few weeks ago, and I believe, based on the discussion, I think maybe only one other member attended any of those sessions. But I thought that that was both interesting and important, and so I took time off from my job to participate in that conference. So I'd like to understand what the requirement will be. If I'm told there is not a seat, that I will be in the audience and not be a participant, I will not attend. So I just need to know what the expectation is so that we're all on the same page.
Is that, this is Chairman Seaver, so is that addressed to me?
It's addressed to whoever is making the expectation that alternates are going to be attending, and I believe you're the one that stated that in the last meeting.
That's correct. That's the way I read the bylaws and as such, and I realize, apparently, that has not been the expectation or necessarily followed in the past. I have to comment, I think you've been very diligent in fulfilling your role and follow up with our secretary and the like as far as being available when the need arises. I feel personally that as an alternate, if possible, and if it's not possible, then fine, that it's good for even the alternates to be in attendance at the meetings because if there is a vacancy, if there's a conflict of interest, then we have someone can fill in for that position. In addition, as chairman, I will certainly give alternates an opportunity to, even if we have a full commission, to make a comment. They might not be able to vote, but to participate by having input to the process. I'm not sure there's a need to change the process. I'm just indicating to you what, how I read the bylaws. Certainly, they can be changed or modified, and if you have some suggested changes to the bylaws, certainly that can be presented to the commission, and we can consider them.
Okay, I will come prepared with some suggestions on that. I just, again, wanted to understand where I stood because I, you know, I don't want to be in a situation where I'm being removed because I wasn't in attendance to a meeting that there was no chair for.
Understood.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other commission member have a comment, question? Yes, member, right?
I just got my orientation today, and I had been told that I could attend these meetings virtually, but then I was told at the orientation today that that order from the governor is going to be over at the end of October about allowing virtual representation at a meeting. So I understood from staff that possibly there was something we or they could do to bring that issue up, to allow somebody to show up virtually.
Well, perhaps we could ask the attorney to clarify that. As I understand, based upon our conversation today, if you have a grounds or reasons why you can't be in attendance and you want to attend by phone, and nobody's telling you what that, the legal required grounds have to be, you can do that. Is that correct?
Close.
Close.
There is a attorney general's opinion on this subject matter that I can send to you if you'd like to review it, but generally, the question has been discussed and looked at prior to COVID, and the same situation applies. And it is in regards to the Florida requirement for quorum and public participation of the public body, and the quorum for this board is four. And so at least four members must continue to appear in person. The leniency that the governor allowed, allowed for no quorum requirements in person in order to conduct public meetings, but that is part of what's going away. However, the city has continued to maintain our physical quorum, so that doesn't necessarily apply to us, but that is part of the removal of the governor's order as it relates to local governments. So at the end of October, the requirement for communication media technology, the paragraph that I read at the beginning of the, at the last paragraph in the first page of your notice of your agenda, that won't apply anymore. But we will have the same tools and technology, clearly, that's not going away, but it is a drain on our staff that we didn't have in place before COVID that we've now worked around. And so what I think the next step is to develop a city policy, if it's necessary, maybe it's not, but the guidance that was in place prior to COVID still exists, that we are required to maintain a physical quorum, at least four members must be physically present. There are seven seats, and so there's seven seats for participation, and then we have two alternates. Right now, we have a full board, so this is great. But if one of the members of the seven had a reason, emergency, there's discussion in the AGO as to what qualifies a reason to qualify for the telecommunication, then it has to be set up in advance, there must be notice provided to the chairman, and there must be notice provided to the city so that we can set up the technology for the individual, which means you can't call us at 5:55 and say, hey, can I do it remotely? I don't know if the policy that the city may set up will say, you need to tell us within 48 hours or something like that so that we can accommodate, sorry, so that we can accommodate in time, but, but that may be part of what the city manager looks at in order to determine whether or not a city policy is required. The guidance that we have is that it just needs to be done in advance, but the powers are there to set up the remote meetings, and I just don't know if we're going to further clarify it, but it's not going to be under the governor's order as of October 31st. Sorry for the long-winded answer.
But would I be able to attend by phone the next meeting?
We're not sure of that unless there's a great need for it.
It depends on if you have a reason, and so you have to-
Well, the overwhelming reason is the COVID pandemic. It hasn't abated. The deaths and the cases are just as high as they were in the summer.
Sure, and I don't know that this is the forum to discuss that. That is a reason, that you just have to provide a reason.
And staff will have to discuss this later on. I mean, it may come to a city policy or it may not, but it does, it is very difficult for staff to arrange these meetings with now two virtual attendees, if you do attend virtually. And so we'd have to discuss that further among staff and with the city manager, I'm sure.
But is there something that we should be doing to get that in operation?
You could make a motion to ask the city council to determine if there is going to be a policy on virtual participation for meetings going forward.
But, but we can't require city council to do anything, but-
We have a resolution that's in place- We have a resolution that's in place, 16-2020, that the city council enacted that is paired with the governor's executive order. And with the expiration of the executive order on midnight on October 31st, then there will not be a resolution in play. And it would be appropriate for council to discuss if they want to do something else going forward.
Again, that's up to council.
That's what I said. It would be a question, the motion is to ask council to act.
I just don't want Commissioner O'Reilly to understand that his counsel will necessarily arrive at a conclusion on that.
Well, I'm just bringing the issue
Commissioner, Riley, would you like to make that as a motion to ask the council to consider that as a part of their review of the resolution?
Yes, absolutely.
So that's a motion on your part?
Absolutely. I mean, here we are discussing that an alternate has to be coming to all the meetings. And again, nothing has changed with the status of the COVID pandemic in Titusville.
I second.
I agree with you 100%.
You know, and I'm over 65, and I think there's some people up on the stage that are too.
What was the motion, sorry? That the city council do what now? Or to advise the city council?
To ask the city council to allow members or alternate members of the Planning and Zoning Commission to appear by phone with the basis being the COVID pandemic.
Thank you.
And the age of the members.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other items that?
Did you do a vote on that?
Yes. We have a second? Pardon? Yes, she did. Okay. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Those opposed, no? Passes unanimously. Any other, Member Richardson, do you have another item? Okay. One other item I just want to mention and not, again, with regard to the gun range, I think perhaps a number of us were struggling concerning that item, concerning its location, concerning the code. Doesn't even address gun ranges and whether or not it should be allowed in community commercial or whether they should be restricted more to industrial areas like police hall of fame and the like. Just think about that. I may bring it up at the next meeting if we want to ask staff to look at that issue. Because I was struggling because of its proximity to Titusville High School. The fence behind it, there's a house 10 feet away. And it, and, yes. And whether we like it or not, I mean, I'm aware of a number of publicities dealing with gun ranges in which not the guns range owner, but other people bringing guns there, and there being problems and people getting killed. And whether or not that should be really going on and where it should be located, since we can consider location as a part of our zoning criteria. We may not be able to consider a lot of other things, but we can consider location, as I understand it. So I may bring that up at the next meeting under my report. And not hearing anything else, the meeting is adjourned.